Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the presentation meeting of the City of Titusville on August 25, 2020 at 5:30 PM. We have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. If you, let's see, what was next? If you will, city clerk, will you read the rules of the evening?
Yes, sir.
To speak to council, I'm sorry.
This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Councils will not take any formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak.
And city attorney, would you please read the rules for the meeting?
The city council meeting may be conducted by utilizing communications media technology as provided in Section 120.545B2 Florida statutes without having a quorum of council physically present in the council chambers. In order to help prevent the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus and to comply with all local, state, and federal laws and guidelines regarding social distancing and social gatherings, designated seating shall be provided for the public within City Hall. Individual speakers shall, when directed to do so, be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at City Hall during the meeting in accordance with City of Titusville Resolution Number 162020. Signs held by speakers are permissible, but no tripods, easel, props, or other demonstrative aid shall be brought into City Hall. In addition to the regular broadcast of the council meeting via closed circuit television and YouTube video, which may be accessed through the city's website, video and audio of the meeting will also be provided within City Hall for the public in attendance. As an additional method for public participation, the public may submit written comments via email to city.agenda@titusville.com or by regular mail to City Council's attention at City Hall 555 South Washington Avenue, Titusville, Florida 32796. Written comments must be received by 5:00 PM prior to the start of the meeting and include the senator's name, address, and the subject line must specify the agenda item being addressed. All comments will be disseminated to the council members and made a part of the public record prior to any action being taken. Speakers who appear in person will be subject to screening for symptoms of COVID-19, and any persons exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 will not be permitted to enter City Hall.
Thank you, sir. In moving invocation, please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which things, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager?
Yes, sir, and council, I have one administrative note before we get started. The YouTube live feed is currently not functioning, so staff is continuing to work to get that live feed working. We are recording and will upload the meeting after the meeting's over with if we can't get a live feed going.
Okay.
And we are on Agenda Item 4A. Staff will provide a presentation on low-impact development ordinance. Staff will request direction from City Council and advisability on the item under New Business portion of the 6:30 City Council meeting. And we have KB Faso and Eddie Galindo here for the presentation.
Hi, guys.
Hey there. Good evening, mayor and council. Thanks for having me tonight. I want to apologize to the, to the members in the audience who have seen this presentation before, and if you all watched the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's the same presentation. So it may seem a little bit repetitive, but it's the same presentation. My name is Eddie Galindo. I'm the Sustainability Planner for the city, and I'm also the city staff liaison to the Titusville Environmental Commission. So I wanted to start the presentation by asking members of council if you could, if anyone feels like they have a strong grasp on the concept of low-impact development, if you could give me your thoughts on what low-impact development is.
You could put us on the spot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll try it.
Let me just be basic. Low impact on the environment. I mean,
Right.
I wouldn't call it rocket science, even though we're in the Rocket City. But obviously, and we, we kind of had the presentation a while ago. I might not have been able to say that. But obviously, all the different ideas that create as little impact on our, you know, our, our environment. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Thank you.
Get all the specs for me if you want.
Anyone else?
Anybody else?
I would agree with the vice mayor. We're looking at reducing runoff into the river. We're looking at getting the water to filter down through the ground as opposed to running off, the pollutants being trapped before they do any harm. So I think trying to get away from fossil fuel would be part of it.
Okay.
So that, that would be it for me.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to? Or it seems like that makes, makes, does enough explaining to?
Great, thank you. So I'll, I'll put a couple pictures up here and ask you if, if to your understanding of low-impact development, if these pictures summarize what you imagine low-impact development to be. On the top left, we've got concrete conveyance stormwater pipe. The top right, we've got a downspout that's got the stormwater flowing across concrete to a drain. The bottom right, we see some grass, so that might be LID, right? We think of being able to filter, but unfortunately, there's a curb there, and so the water's not able to interact with the stormwater to be able to infiltrate or to filter any of the stormwater pollutants. And in the bottom left, we've got a subdivision that has a, a stormwater pond that's off to the side, and instead of it being kind of decentralized stormwater throughout the subdivision, we've got just one large pond. So do these images capture what you expect low-impact development to look like? Not, not exactly. So what if I bring a couple other pictures up? We've got some pavement that's got cutouts in it with grass growing in between to allow some of the stormwater to flow through. We've got a rain garden or a bioswale that's, there's curb cuts there to allow the stormwater to flow, to be able to be stored and to filter. On the bottom right, we've got what we typically see in parking lots, a landscape island with curbs around it. However, in this image, on the left-hand side, there's a curb cut that allows the stormwater to flow through. It's been engineered to, to, for the parking to sheet flow the, the stormwater through the curb cut, and so this landscape island can now store some of the water. And on the bottom left, similar concept, except in this case, they've used parking stops to prevent vehicles from traveling through the, the landscape area. However, this, it's got several openings, so the stormwater can flow through as well. So is this more of on the task of low-impact development? Right. So the US EPA has a definition for low-impact development, and it's somewhat broad. Low-impact development can mean a lot of things to different people, but generally, it focuses on stormwater and treating stormwater close to where it falls. So instead of having, like in conventional subdivisions, one large pond where you might have stormwater flowing a long distance, along curbs and conveyance structures, you try to treat it in smaller ponds, decentralized throughout the development. In comparing some conventional development types and versus LID, before we get to the comparison, I did want to mention because some people are unfamiliar with our stormwater and our sewer system, just because in different parts of the country, stormwater is treated differently. In Florida, or at least here in Titusville, we have separate systems between the sewer system and the stormwater system, so they don't all flow to the same pipe and the same conveyance structure. They're separated. And so you've got the sewer that handles the household waste and the stormwater that just captures the, the runoff. In a conventional stormwater system, you're going to have, in this example, some impervious area, the driveway, and the front yard that's sloped towards the front, towards the street where there's curbs. And so the design is for the stormwater to flow as fast as possible to those curbs and, and get it out of where we don't want it, our neighborhoods. In this, on the left-hand side, the example, once the waters, the stormwater flows through the inlet, it's going to be conveyed through pipes to the stormwater pond and eventually out to an outlet, especially if there's a heavy rain event and it overflows. On the right-hand side, we've got low-impact development, and so you've got different techniques shown in this diagram. On kind of the left-hand side, rain gardens are natural depressions, or they don't necessarily have to be natural, but depressions in the landscape that can store some stormwater before it's cast offsite. Landscaping, the more landscaping that you have increases the surface area where stormwater can attach to the, the leaves and the, the bark of the tree. Instead of it all falling, if you didn't have landscape, it would fall straight to the ground and become sheet flow. And then you also have permeable pavement, driveways to allow some of the stormwater to infiltrate, and you might have some open drainage, like a drainage swale in the front yard, and a rain barrel as well. And low-impact development's not new to Titusville. We have several examples of some recent public projects, probably within the last five years. We've got Drefield that has some litoral plantings and is a biofiltration system. At the senior center pond and Coleman Pond across from Parish Medical Center, we have the bee mats, which are the floating vegetative islands. The roots are in the, the water absorbing the nutrients, and then the city staff removes the vegetation that grows using the nutrients, and so it's removing net, the nitrogen and the phosphorus from the stormwater. Curb cuts, when we improved the trail on Indian River Avenue, the, the landscape islands were designed with curb cuts to allow the stormwater to flow into the, the landscaped area. And then Kirk Point Park across from El Leoncito is our first example of underground retention. So if you remember, there were some large black plastic cases that were stacked on site while that park was being improved, and that was to, because it's such a narrow site, to allow the stormwater to be captured below the grade, basically. We also have a couple examples of LID in private projects, though not as many. Titus Landing and Ron Norris Honda, there are some litoral plantings. At the Space Coast Credit Union along Highway 50, there's some, the site was, was created with, using pervious pavement. And then at La Cita Golf Course, the ponds are used to capture stormwater, and then there's a pump to use the stormwater when it's drier out for irrigation purposes. So it's an example of stormwater harvesting. To summarize the key points of the LID ordinance that you'll be seeing at the 6:30 meeting, it's kind of broken up into three parts. We've got the introduction that is is to help us define the objectives. What are we trying to achieve with LID? As we saw, there is some consensus on what LID is, but some people tend to think of, of other things as well, and so we want to make it clear what it is we're trying to achieve. The second is operations and maintenance, so it's important that any of these BMPs, if they are used, continue to function over time, and also that our Public Works Department doesn't become responsible for maintaining these systems moving forward, because that'd be very expensive for them. And then the last part is the, the LID matrix, which is our toolbox that we would be incorporating into the code, that we could point to these different LID BMPs, best, best management practices. And the LID matrix is broken up into three sections, so we've got the site planning BMPs. It's kind of the earliest, the planning stage of development, some of the most cost-effective LID techniques, and that's looking at your soils to see which parts of the development have the best draining soils that could be used for your stormwater system without having to amend the soils or redesign the, the grade. Looking at possibly clustering your development, setting aside a certain portion of the development as maybe it's a sensitive area or something that, that you want to remain, and so you cluster your lots and reduce the amount of infrastructure instead of spreading it out across the site. Or another example is building more vertically so that you minimize the building footprint on the site. Source control BMPs is the next section. With source control BMPs, we're looking at minimizing the amount of stormwater pollutants, and so we do that by, with construction fences delineating a portion of the site where we're not going to allow heavy construction of vehicles to, I'm trying to think of the word, tamp, compact, thank you KB, compact the soils to a point where the water can't infiltrate through. Instead, it's going to sheet flow off to the side. Or you might have a rain barrel that captures the first inch or so of stormwater within the rain barrel instead of it spreading onto the site. And efficient irrigation is another example of, of source control BMPs. And then the last of the types, the BMPs, we have the structural stormwater BMPs, and these are kind of the flashy, most visible techniques because they're the engineered, they're also the most expensive techniques, and that would be things like an exfiltration trench, a bioswale along the road, or it doesn't necessarily have to be along the road, or the underground retention. I did also want to mention that Governor DeSantis signed Senate Bill 712 until all this summer. Senate Bill 712 requires that the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the Water Management Districts take a look at the Environmental Resource Permit Handbook. It's the applicant handbook that you use to design stormwater systems. And so what the bill requires is that these agencies take a look and specifically require them to address low-impact development, best management practices, and design criteria. And it also establishes a timeline for them. They have to have, have initiated the rulemaking, their process of updating their codes by January 1 of next year. So by the end of this year, technically, or not technically, but effectively. In developing the draft ordinance that you'll see at, at the 6:30 meeting, we took a look at some of the other communities to see how they encourage or require LIDs. Some of the incentives that are included, Fort Myers allows a stormwater user fee reduction equal to the percent of onsite retention. So if you're able to store 50% of your stormwater onsite, you get a 50% credit towards your stormwater user fee. In Leon County, they allow additional 5% to 10% required, your maximum parking. So you're allowed more parking than the maximum if you use permeable pavements. And they also have a landscaping credit where if you install some BMPs, you can use the BMP area towards your landscaping credit at a two-to-one ratio. So if your BMP takes up 100 square feet, you get 200 square feet towards your landscape requirement. And then they also have a, an incentive for grass pavers. It's a one-to-one. In Ormond Beach, they have a review fee that's waived and an expedited application for developments that, that use LID. And in Pinellas County, they allow up to 50% of your open space to be satisfied using LID BMPs. And so if you use them, you can get credit towards your open space. On the right-hand side, the communities that require LIDs, Elatchua County was an example that requires it, and when I spoke with their stormwater engineer, he explained that on the western side of Elatchua County is where they have the sensitive karst area, and that's just the area that's susceptible to sinkholes, that has the Swiss cheese-looking limestone. And so he explained to me that what happens is that if you have one development with a centralized, let's say it's a dry retention conventional type stormwater system, and a sinkhole were to open beneath that, that that development now would no longer have any stormwater capacity, and so they prefer to have a decentralized approach in these areas. In Walton County, they require LID in the coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone, and so these are ancient lakes found along the beach. However, in Walton County, they consider buffers and impervious surface limitations to be considered low-impact development techniques. And so that kind of brings me to some of the low-impact development techniques that we, techniques that we currently have in our code. We have Section 3163 that has a minimum requirement for preservation of open space, so we do require some open space of development. Chapter 33 gives some development options. We've got the cluster subdivision and the conservation subdivision aimed at clustering lots and again minimizing the infrastructure to one portion of the site instead of spreading infrastructure across. Chapter 28 limits the building footprint with our maximum building coverage. Section 1227 is our fertilizer requirements, and Section 3276 is related to pervious pavement. Previously in the city, you used to be able to get a credit for pervious pavement where 75% of the area would be considered pervious. So let's, again, in that example with 100 square feet, you put in 100 square feet of pervious pavement, only 25% is going to be counted towards your impervious requirement. We recently, within the last year, changed that so that it is allowed to apply across the city. So we are trying to give more flexibility by allowing different developments across the city, not just within our area of critical concern, where it is important, but trying to give more, more options to developers to try to incorporate these LID BMPs. And so what you'll see during the 6:30 meeting is your next steps, your alternatives. The first alternative is to direct staff to wait until 2021, when we see kind of what the state is, their approach towards LID. Alternative two is to direct staff to develop an ordinance encouraging the use of LID without requiring their use. That's effectively the ordinance that was drafted that's attached to the item. Alternative three is to budget for a consultant who would assist us in creating an ordinance requiring LIDs, and staff is, is expecting that that cost would be about $50,000. And then the final alternative is other direction as desired. I did want to also remind you that this item has been to both the Titusville Environmental Commission and to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and at the TEC meeting, it was recommended approval as written, which is effectively alternative two, to encourage the use of LID BMPs. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was recommended that the ordinance be amended to require LID, hire a consultant only if necessary, and to create an ordinance by January 1 of 2021. And with that, KB is here. You have kind of more technical questions, but other than that, I will try to field your questions.
I, I, this isn't exactly technical, but I have always found that people have a hard time understanding that height can be LID or smart growth. You want to just go over that, as to why?
So the approach with building vertically is that where you might have the same area of a building spread across a site, instead you condense it, and you only take up, the building footprint is smaller, however, you're building a little bit taller. And so there's less of an impact. You allow more infiltration on the site by having more open space on a development. But I do know that height is a little contentious sometimes.
Yeah, but also with bigger breezeways on the side, that's, that's a plus for it. Anybody have any questions of staff?
Yeah.
Oh, here we, where?
Who's first?
Oh, Member Nelson, you're next.
Eddie, do we know where the EPA is on drafting their new regulations?
So it's not the EPA, because that would be at the federal level.
Okay.
This is DEP, Florida DEP, and the Water Management Districts at the state level, and they have had two webinars where they've explained what LID is and asked for feedback from cities, from the public. They have, I think the, I don't want to give you the wrong information about what the email address is, but they have an email address, I think it's stormwater@dep, where they're currently trying to receive as much feedback as possible on what that should look like. But no, I, I, other than to tell you that they've had two webinars, I don't know how far they are, they are along in the process.
How did they give us an idea of maybe if they're going to get done faster or slower?
It's a good question. I, I would imagine that if they are only required to initiate rulemaking by 2021, that it may be several months after January 1 when this will be finalized. So I expect that they would have a draft version of what they're proposing to adopt by January 1.
Okay. I know Peggy was talking about why we need, would need a consultant, so this question is, is KB. She passed buck. Let me ask you, if we were talking about putting something in place for swells, like on the second page, which by the way, those are cool looking, curb cutouts, rain gardens, additional landscaping, pervious payment, that, that wouldn't require a consultant, would it?
No, if we, if we use practices that have been tried in other jurisdictions in a general way, then we wouldn't need a consultant. But if we want to tailor it specifically to the soils and et cetera that exist in Titusville, then we need much more detail.
So we could actually start small, so to speak, and when we got the stuff in from the state, then we could discuss what, how far we wanted to go?
Yes, that's an option.
Okay. Thank you.
Emma Jordan.
Hey, thanks. Good presentation for sure. I, I had a couple of questions. One is probably One is probably was on a personal note. I'm looking at the option of having your gutters go down to a rain barrel. For LID, wouldn't you think that would be a good suggestion for our citizens to do the same thing? I mean, isn't that an easy approach to doing something? I have a rain barrel, surprise, but I was just wondering about that because I see on really raining days, if you don't have a gutter, of course, the water is just sheeting down, especially if you have a huge roof like I do. It just sheets down, it's not doing exactly what you're looking for it to do, right? So that would be something that we could suggest in our, right, to, for our citizens to do something like that.
Absolutely.
I think you answered the question as far as consultant is concerned. I kind of hate for us to spend money on consultants, especially when you guys are smart enough to come up with some things, especially if there's already best practices out there, and you've given examples of that, so I don't really see a reason why we need to have a consultant. But I was interested in what the TEC said. Let's put something together, but not, but making, but basically making an option. Is staff looking at this being an option, but giving incentives to ensure that maybe they would put some things in place?
Correct. So in the current draft, there are no incentives, but incentives are something we could include. One thing to consider is that if we don't have the engineering to back up the storm water, basically the storm water handling capacity of the BMP, then the incentive could not be tied to their storm water management system. So for example, like with Leon County, they allow an additional amount of parking if you use pervious pavement, but it's not, that's not tied to the size of their storm water system. And I think that's what KB is saying, is that in order for us to fully assess how this system, how this system's going to function with these, given these soils and topography, that we would first need to know that kind of information, otherwise the incentives could be beyond storm water.
Okay. So just thinking about a development, it would be smarter if we want to go with LID to have, say the development have brick pavers for a driveway versus solid concrete. Is that true?
I don't think so, yeah.
Really?
Well, could you say that again?
Well, brick pavers have cracks in it, right?
Right, but for, at least for the city's pervious credit, it has to be a product that's designed to be a permeable pavement, not just a paver with cracks in between.
Yeah, we have a, we have a specification for pavers that would qualify for the credit.
Okay.
For example, it must have a certain amount of porosity, made of a certain type of material and so on, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Members Stokel, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Yes, just a couple.
Go ahead.
I appreciate the presentation that you guys put together. It was very informative. I would say, I think that council, I think planning and zoning, and I think that the Environmental Commission, I think you're getting a consensus that we are very interested in this. From what information I've seen so far, I'm leaning towards keeping it as encouraging right now, but kind of waiting until 2021 when we have more guidance and direction to see about going down, getting that consultant, and looking toward having incentives and really concrete things, because when I'm looking at it, I feel like if we go down the path of the, right now, I think it would be very difficult to, I guess, quantify what we're actually requiring, because the different developments, the different areas will have different, different makeups, have different trees, different, I don't know. I guess I don't feel like we have enough information at this point.
I just wanted to remind council, the discussion on advisability is really going to take place at the 6:30 meeting under Item 12A. Just to remind council, we will be having advisability on LID on 12A at 6:30.
Any other comments? If not, next item, please.
Yes, sir. I'd like to read letters of appreciation that were received for our following employees for the record, from Community Development, Christian Ashberry, Chris Enright, Eddie Galindo, Chelsea Farrell from our legal department, Mike Artelli, and Ashley Smith from our water department.
Thank you, sir. Petitions and requests is next. Does anyone wish to speak on the petitions and requests? Please come up.
Good evening. My name is Stan Johnston.
You have three minutes, sir?
Say it again?
You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stan Johnston, and I'm here because I've sent you an email, and I have not, I don't have a response. And it's asking you to tell the truth about this $70,000 report that I have never been sent, although the mayor says that I've received eight or 10 copies of it. So this is, this is a report to be back 18 months ago on February 12th, that the $70,000 report doesn't exist, and it's slander against me and my family and many people in our community. In fact, it's all of us, our children and our grandchildren. So I'm asking you to tell the truth, because what it is, is what we have is, we have, there's no truth to it. The report doesn't exist. I've contacted GeoSynTech, they have no contract. I've contacted the city, request for records, there is no contract, there is no report. So this, this wild and crazy story continues today after 18 months. So what I'm saying is that people here, including our, our city manager and our city attorney, are guilty of this, of this injustice and this wild and crazy story. So I've written a letter here that is dated July the 4th, it's dated, I don't even have it here right now. Yes, here it is. That indicates that you're not being honest about this, and you have a closed-door policy and a code of silence, and this is, this is not helping the situation. And what I'm putting you in that situation is that you're not honest, you're dishonest, and you're fraudsters, shysters, and clowns on this issue, because it just doesn't exist. So I'm asking you to, to be truthful, because this is continuing now for 18 months, and that's way overdue to, can do this. And you might want to ask me questions like that. Well, why don't you sue, sue, why don't I sue you for this slander? And some other questions you might want to ask. But right now, this is slanderous remarks.
Your time is up, sir.
Okay. I'm asking for two more minutes, please.
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Come right up, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Tony Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street, one of the 12 locally designated historic structures. May I take that off? Thank you.
You can take that if you want to speak, ma'am. There's nobody around you.
I took the time to take the storm water informational seminar that the FDEP was offering, and I just wanted to say I have the email address, which is, they're looking for suggestions for innovative designs, and as Richard Musgrove on that committee stated, he says, "We don't get too many novel designs, but they're very open to having novel designs on storm water runoff." He says, "They're looking for ways, innovative systems to regulate quantity and quality of the storm water runoff, and they're open to these suggestions and looking for them actively by October 1st of this year, so that they can then have time to formulate some things to have their report ready by the end of the year, by January 1st." So I just wanted to say that LID is coming, and we have the opportunity to be the rocket scientists about it and to get it off the ground. We have that opportunity because we have so much undeveloped land inside the city limits of Titusville, and I would encourage people, especially people who have a lot of knowledge about innovative systems of storm water runoff, to actually submit some suggestions to the FDEP, because they're actively looking to change things. As they said, they've been following the same BMPs since 1985, although standards have changed.
Ma'am, if you would, you don't have to do it right now, but after the meeting or something, give that information you mentioned to our city clerk so that we can have access to that if somebody refuses it.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak on the, on the petitions and requests? Last chance. I don't see anybody, okay. Any other comments from council? I see nobody, okay. I've declared this meeting over. The next meeting will start at 6:30 PM.